But I guess, I guess we get started.
Yeah. Well, hello, hello everybody. Welcome to the Plimpton ZBA meeting in relation to SLT's plans for a 40B. It's good to have you all here. I am Suzanne Jaffarian. I am acting chair for this committee, although I nominated Ethan to serve.
You're official, you're official chair of the committee.
I'm official chair for the committee. And he's acting for this meeting, so. So Ethan Stiles is also, Stiles is secretary. We have Lucas, Lucas Kowalski, and Dave Elbari. And we have one other alternate, but he's not here right now, so, and that's the only meeting that he has missed. I've missed one, and I believe Lucas is gonna miss one, and hopefully we'll have enough to make this.
Can we record this, Suzanne?
Oh, yeah.
Or it'll be recorded.
It is, it is recorded.
Okay, and this meeting is being recorded for public, it's on public TV or?
Yes, Area 58, local access.
Area 58.
Is, is who's.
Is recording it, so, and then I'll just let you.
All right, so, last, last time we had, what we, last time we had selected our peer, our peer reviewer, what was it, Driscoll was the peer reviewer?
We have a Mr. Gogory from JDB.
Driscoll's here tonight, and we have the applicant and his project manager, and his project manager here. And I believe what we said the last meeting was that tonight we would hear a presentation from the applicant on various aspects of the, of the development. So if they would like to speak first, we're happy to listen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Paul Cussin, Adolphic Associates. Our understanding was a little different in that we had submitted plans, including stormwater management plan, to be reviewed by your consulting engineer. And then we were hoping that we would be able to respond to any comments that they would make. And that was gonna be the intent of tonight's meeting, that our engineer would be, because there's not much sense in having him do a full engineering presentation, as a lot of it is very technical in nature. So we thought that it made sense, and you had asked for a deposit by the applicant for peer review, which was done. My understanding is that the peer reviewer has not been given authorization to proceed. But Greg can speak for himself, so therefore there's no, nothing for us to respond to.
Are we going to have a presentation by McKenzie?
I'm sorry?
Are we going to have a presentation by McKenzie today?
No, the plan was that McKenzie, they didn't make any sense.
That was my understanding.
Maybe the miscommunication, but we had, it was under our impression that your peer review engineer would respond. We submitted a full, what I believe to be a full set of engineering drawings, the stormwater management plan, and so forth. And made more sense to have the peer review engineer review that. And then typically, applicant's engineer would respond to the peer reviewer, and they would work out, you know, any differences and discuss that sort of, and that was the intent of tonight's meeting. And speaking to Greg, he has not received authorization to proceed, even though a check was deposited many, a few weeks ago.
So why don't we, why don't we address that now? Because yes, now, as I, as I was.
Go ahead.
As I was informed, you know, you, you gave us that check, and I took, and I took a deposit with our town treasurer, and I told, and I told her it was fees put in this in a 53G account.
Right.
And after that, I, my understanding was, is that, you know, that Driscoll and Associates would, you know, would bill us for the work, and we would pay, and we would review and pay the bills as they came in, and take care, take care of the deposit that way. But I'm not sure if that is, you know, everybody else's understanding. Town Council, does that sound, does that sound like the.
That's how the mechanism should work, is the applicant should make the, you know, should hand over the check, whatever the amount was we requested, as an initial deposit. It goes into the treasurer's 53G account for this project, and from there, we are then able, we meaning the town, are able to pay Mr. Driscoll for his services.
And that, and.
Yeah, and the proposal we sent, and you got signed and sent back, did have our deposit requirement on there, and I didn't, I was kinda waiting to see if we're gonna get a deposit, or to begin the work, so that's, if we get a signed contract and a deposit, then we can start the work.
But you did get a signed contract.
We did get a signed contract.
Were we supposed to write a check? Was the town supposed to write a check? Like, how does that work?
We might, we'll keep it a generator, a invoice today, we'll have it sent over.
Okay. Okay. I mean, the town could have, once you signed the contract, the town could have made that initial payment and authorized Mr. Driscoll to proceed. If he generates an invoice, probably even better for your town accountant, who'll be happier to see that there's a, you know, they've got the paper trail there. But yes, he needs to be given some seed money to start, and also obviously all of the plans to review.
I have those numbers.
All right, so then.
I've taken a look, so, you know, it's not like I haven't.
So then should we make a motion to request or instruct the treasurer to release the money to Mr. Driscoll?
It isn't so much the treasurer directly. It would come from, as I understand it, it would be the building administrator who would normally pay bills on behalf of the ZBA. Like, for example, when you pay advertising fees for public hearings, someone in that office generates the request for payment against that account. Okay, well, then I guess we have to talk about you, Kathy, and the treasurer in getting a check cut to Mr. Driscoll.
I just don't, because, you know, usually the advertisers feed a hundred bucks, and I get reimbursed, but fifteen thousand dollars is a different kettle of fish.
Right, right. No, you, you should not be fronting any money. This should all come out of the 53G account, which is why we asked the applicant to make that deposit. But yes, Mr. Driscoll needs to be paid. He doesn't get paid directly by the applicant, he gets paid by the town because he's our peer review consultant.
And we, we agreed, I forget what the exact amount was, that as that account, you know, came down to a certain amount, I think it was twenty-five hundred dollars, then we would replenish that account, replenish if necessary.
As needed, right.
If it's not going through the process.
All right, so how, so how do, you know, so how should, how should we resolve this? I'd be happy to talk to the town treasurer tomorrow and tell him, you know, you know, you know, does she need to, I mean, the amount is not insignificant, though. Does she need to author, I don't know if our building administrator actually cuts, you know, issues checks to anybody.
She, she doesn't issue checks. It's a request, that you get the invoice, and you make a request to the treasurer. The treasurer actually cuts the checks and sends them out, or wires them, however it may be.
Okay, all right, so what I think should be done is, you know, Mr. Driscoll, you can send the invoice to Lucas. Lucas will forward it to me. I will send, you know, I will send, you know, I will go to the treasurer with it and make the request to have her issue the check to you, which is a very roundabout way to do it.
So I can just send it to both of you.
Okay, that'd be fine. All right, so we can, so if you do that tomorrow, we can get it done, you know, obviously, you know, tomorrow, Thursday. And then, and then I guess at that point, then we can schedule, you know, how much time you think you would need, once you get the money to, to review their work.
If you're ready to sell.
All right.
We would like at least one week prior to, to receive Greg's report, one week prior to the next meeting, so hopefully our engineer will have an opportunity to review their comments and possibly respond to some or all of the comments, which is a difficult process.
All right, that, that makes, that's fair, that makes sense. So I guess what we should, I guess the only thing we can do now, and I apologize for the delay in this, I just, you know, this is a new process for us, and we're still figuring out how it works, is that we should schedule another meeting in August, the one, and make sure it's recorded, because Lucas won't be here, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, and, so that, the meeting that he can miss. You know, make sure it's recorded, and, and, you know, and do those, and do those two things at that, at that point, where you can have the, you know, so, the meeting that we're gonna plan, plan for late August, I think is, I think is reasonable. Maybe the last weekend, August, maybe the 20th, August 27th, is that, that date might work for people.
Yeah, yes. Let me just look, um, what day of the week is that?
It's Wednesday.
It's Wednesday, okay.
So hopefully somewhere around the 20th, 15th, 19th, we think.
All right.
And you, and to be clear, you want McKenzie Engineering's or a representative also at this meeting?
They'll be.
Okay. That's your peer reviewer.
Okay. All right, so, all right, so on that date, we'll hear, which, which order should we have? Should we have the peer reviewer speak, or have McKenzie speak, and the peer reviewer respond? Do you guys have a particular preference, or usual way this gets, that gets done?
Typically, the peer review would prepare their report. Then we would respond. Then two engineers at a public meeting would discuss maybe some differences, and then there's maybe more engineering that may be required. It's usually, the engineer usually takes a couple of meetings at least, two or three meetings. So typically what will happen is, is that we then would respond, and then peer review checks off those things that are, that are complete on the, on the list.
So if I may, Mr. Chair, through you to Mr. Driscoll, I know with other peer reviewers I've worked with, you generate a document, an initial document, that you go through soup to nuts of everything that is, you know, compliant or deficient with respect to your scope of work. And then typically, you'd share that, then, in this case with McKenzie Engineering, and they would respond right in that document. And there would be that back and forth exchange, so that eventually, when the board is ready to make a decision, all of those items should be resolved. And we should have that document showing that everything has either been resolved, or that if it can't be resolved in some way, maybe it generates a waiver, or a condition, or something like that. But I would assume we're gonna have that working document that's gonna be shared. Great, thank you.
And I typically share a word document, version of it to the engineer that I think is.
Great.
Would we get copies of that?
Yes, you absolutely do.
So we'll get that ahead of time.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yep.
So it's important, this process, to, for us to state that, in accordance to the 40B regulations, with plans, typically, in a normal process through the planning board, a preliminary set of plans is presented to the planning board. Planning board then rules on those plans, and that gets into a final, what they call final set of plans. So in the stages of, in regards to a 40B, the processes are supposed to be similar, in that the plans don't have to be fully definitive set of plans. They're still technically preliminary, except in a 40B hearing, typically they go above and beyond preliminary plans. It's substantial detail in order to allow the board to understand and to make a decision regarding the application.
And to bring up any local concerns.
Right. So that's, so I think we're basically in the same, in the same way, one connection that we got.
So it's what you're gonna say, that after this process, you're gonna go to conservation?
That would be post-perm.
For NOI. And then after that process, these mic measures of 40Bs, the plans will be finalized, and they come back to ZBA.
Correct, correct. So, so the board gets two looks at, at least two looks at the process. Once all the items are checked off, so to speak, that's presented to the board. The board then makes a decision, and can condition some things, or can approve, do a number of things. Then what happens is that we have to then present the final set of plans, which basically would be a set of plans that get recorded at the registry deeds. But we have, then, the peer review looks at those plans again, to be sure they conform with all the terms and conditions of the perm. And then we come back to the board and get the sign-off, if you will, on the plans. Those plans then typically would, could be recorded. But then we would file with the conservation commission whatever may be necessary. Typically, where the wetlands are, there's a notice of intent that we would have to file on certain lots and so forth, but that's a separate process with the conservation commission, and we have to comply with the state law in regarding, plus any waivers that have been granted through this board on the.
So, so you, so when you.
Notice of intent is done on a lot-by-lot basis. I don't think there would be a notice of intent for the roadway. But we can, we'll have to decide that.
Now, you mentioned when you first began about the, about, you know, the preliminary plans that, that normally, if you go before a planning board, they, they sort of accept or approve provisionally until, you know, as a working basis, right? Now, the plans that you've submitted with your application, obviously, they are, you know, they are, they are, there's several, and they encompass various features of the project, are, you suggesting that we consider those essentially the preliminary plans on which we will move, move forward in our?
No, no.
Okay.
What I'm saying is those, those plans that we submitted are more than what is typically called preliminary plans by, by the planning board, they have a lot more detail. Greg is gonna review those, and we may have to make some additional changes to those plans, to conform with Greg's checklist. And only at that point in time would Greg and our engineer, basically, are in agreement from an engineering point of view, then report back to the board, and the board then would make a decision on those plans and those comments, not on just what was submitted in our application. It's a lot more than that. And then we have to go back to the conservation commission to comply with the state law in regards to any notice of intent that may be required. Sometimes the roadway would need a whole letter of intent, and that's a process, or sometimes, as we're building individual houses on the individual lots, those may need a letter of intent. So that's a normal process with the conservation commission, and the board is not involved in that, unless the conservation commission requires some changes in the plan, and if that would be the case, we would come back to the board and ask the board to determine whether those changes are substantial or insubstantial. And typically, if they're substantial, the board has the whole hearing within 30 days on that substantial change. Or if the board determines, which I'm guessing might be the case, that any changes might be insubstantial, the board could vote on the issue of those being insubstantial, and therefore if they're deemed insubstantial, they're deemed to be approved. If I can, all right?
Sounds good.
All right, all right, thank you. I think, I think I understand that. So I think, I think at this point, we should move to, to set the next hearing date, you know, so we make sure we don't get, you know, get that out of the way. All right, so, all right, so will someone make a motion to, to schedule the next hearing date for August 27th at 6:30 PM?
I sow motion.
Okay, all right, all in favor?
Yeah.
That's, that'll be the next date. Now, is there anything else here we can?
Same time?
Yeah, same time, 6:30. Is there anything else here we can talk about tonight?
Yes.
Okay?
I think we should talk about the traffic study.
Okay. All right.
So, we have two offers. You guys receive all of them. I don't know if maybe our peer review can answer the question you had about what's included in the traffic study, or why it costs so much? Right? You guys had some objections about that?
Why it costs so much?
Yeah, so.
So what had happened is that, as we went through the process, the peer review engineer, who, we can speak for themselves, but they do not have a traffic engineer on staff, so they went out and solicited a traffic, a proposal from a traffic engineer. In doing that process, Greg had, or the firm had asked for, from our traffic engineer, what is gonna be his scope of work, which was in, we submitted that traffic report to you, so, but anyhow, so he submitted on June 10th to Greg what his scope of work. And I believe, and I also submitted that to the board, and it was pretty substantial, you know, two, two pages of comments and so forth as to where they were, what they were studying, like, for example, Spring Street at Route 44, westbound ramps, Route 44, eastbound ramps, Spring Street at Ricketts Pond Drive, Spring Street at High Street, and then existing volumes, and, you know, typical traffic, no bill reports, and so forth. So when, now, the person that we hired, Jeffrey Dirck of Vanessa Associates, is probably one of the leading traffic engineers in the state. And there are others.
Who does he work for? Is the big company, or?
Vanessa Engineering.
How big is the company?
Vanessa Associates.
How big is the company? How large?
I don't know in terms of people. I only know in terms of the 40B world, he is considered, or his firm is considered, and he especially, is considered one of the best firms regarding traffic review. Now, they don't do, I don't think they do major highway work and that sort of thing, but for what we're proposing. So his proposal to us, which is actually a little bit on the high side, from what we're used to seeing from other traffic engineers, but it was in, it was in the same range, it's twelve thousand dollars. So now, we ask for, or you ask for a peer review to review that work, and that came in at twice the amount. Something's wrong.
What is wrong?
Price is wrong.
Why?
Why would it take twice as much to review than it does to prepare the report? Doesn't make sense. So what I did is.
Have you heard about Bowman?
Which one?
Have you heard about Bowman Engineering?
I submitted a list of names that, that.
No, no, no.
I'm not familiar with them, and there are other firms that I'm probably not familiar with, but I submitted to the board and to you, a list of several firms that.
I receive it, thank you very much, I appreciate it. I contacted all of them.
Much larger firms.
They are not larger than Bowman. I don't know, Bowman, it's publicly, you have to understand one thing, that we don't go for the cheapest option here.
I'm not asking you to do that.
So Bowman is a reputable company, as far as I know, maybe you can correct me if I'm wrong. They hire over 2,000 people, I believe, they are, most of them are engineers, they are publicly trade company, nationwide.
We're not gonna pay twenty-one thousand dollars for a report that doesn't make any sense.
It should be a fraction of what we're paying our guy to do the work. He's not.
Doesn't make sense. Common sense.
The price that you're paying to your guy, it's completely irrelevant.
No, it's not. No, it's not. We're, we're, we're getting a traffic engineer that is gonna meet the standards of what they've done by any other engineer. So, and it just doesn't make any common sense that that report, that is twelve thousand dollars, is, they're doing all the work. Your traffic engineer, whoever it may be, reviews that information. They're not starting from scratch. They're not doing the trip counts, they're not doing a lot of that information. So it doesn't make any common sense.
Okay, let me, let me ask you.
And no court would agree with that.
Let me ask you this, sir. Does every, every engineer charge the same hourly rate?
No.
Or it's maybe, because, you know, you go to one lawyer, he charges three hundred dollars, another charged six hundred dollars, another charged nine hundred dollars, so.
Well, we're not gonna hire the guy at nine hundred and six hundred, we're gonna hire a guy that was, within the range. So typical engineer, when we go out for engineering, they'll say, I mean, I respect Greg tremendously. As you know, Greg has done some work for some of our clients. When we go to Greg to get a price for engineering, and we go to another engineer for comparable work, as in this case, McKenzie Engineering, and others, it's generally in the same ballpark. Now, one guy might be fifty thousand, another guy might be sixty thousand, another guy might be forty, so that's within the ballpark. Here, here, they're out of the ballpark. It just doesn't make any sense. So with all due respect, I would like you, I would like the board to consider getting a proposal from a couple, I think we proposed five different companies, and some of them are pretty big.
One.
Yes. But the other was a good size as well.
Some of them were completely irrelevant, if I may say, because I contacted all of them. One was like a erosion engineer, I believe?
Which one?
I'll have to go, I'll have to go and check erosion.
I'm looking, I'm trying to find my list.
So I don't know how are we going to proceed now? I, the companies, I contacted all of them, and I receive a one proposal that I forwarded to my fellow members. This is the previous one. So we have two proposals, and we have to pick one. One is from Bowman Engineering.
That was the 21.
Yes, and another is Howard Stein, I believe?
Stenta?
Howard Stein.
Howard Stein?
Who?
Howard Stein Hudson.
Howard Stein.
Yeah, they're pretty, Howard Stein's pretty big. They're one of the biggest.
I don't see that.
I don't know what the proposal came in, but we've hired that company for, I say we, some of my clients have hired that company, we're doing one right now in Medway.
Okay, so if I, if I see the Stein proposal, the Stein proposal, it looks like they came in at eighty-eight hundred?
Mm-hmm.
All right, I think the proposal dated July 11th, 2025. All right, so.
Yeah, Howard Stein Hudson.
All right, so, and what was the, and what?
Chappelle Engineering is another, I don't know if you contacted them as well, it's another big size engineer, they do a lot of.
No, I already contacted the engineer, you provided us with names, right?
Yes.
I appreciate that, and I contacted them, and we have a proposal from the engineer that you asked us to get a proposal from, right?
What was Chappelle's proposal up? Just curious.
I don't know if, which proposal?
There was Chappelle Engineering, Howard Stein, Tetra Tech, and Stenta.
Yes, some of them did not get back, some of them I already contacted in May, and they never replied from the Sterco or Starco?
I didn't get the one.
Stenta.
Stenta.
Stenta is another.
Can you send it to me?
Yeah, so.
And that's, you know.
We have two proposals, but we are not going to price shop. I don't believe we should go, now, price shopping for another proposals. We have two proposals, and I recommend picking up one.
Okay.
All right, let's, let's see here.
He's forwarding me the one, I didn't see the other one, only saw one of them.
You didn't get, you didn't get this one from July 11th?
No. Maybe it went, maybe it went to my other email.
Is that the email you typically use?
No.
Oh.
Yeah, that's my other email, so I missed it. But I can get it right now, go over there.
Okay, all right.
Did you get a proposal from Chappelle or not?
I don't think, I don't think they wanted to.
If I remember correctly, the proposal from Bowman was attached to the Driscoll proposal, was that the one?
The Bowman, yes, the Bowman is here, so it was twenty-one thousand. You want this on the big screen?
No, I can put it on the big screen. Because that's the one, that's the one we reserved, we reserved on, because of the concern about the price, I remember that.
All right, so we have twenty-one thousand five hundred.
Okay, all right, so that, that.
So it's a significant difference.
All right, so, the eighty-eight, the eighty-eight hundred one is the one I'm looking at now, from Stein, and.
How much was that?
Eighty-eight hundred.
From, oh, Howard Stein?
Yes.
Yeah.
So.
And there, I mean, so something is wrong. So eighty-eight hundred, I mean.
Still too much? Still too much?
Well, no, I think $8,800 is a little high, but at least it's not $21,000.
I mean, I mean...
I don't, I don't, I didn't make up those prices.
Oh, yes.
But just from a...
And I have no experience, you know, to...
Chappelle did not respond. Is that what you're saying?
Like I said, this is the only one who...
The only one that responded?
Yes. It's not that I'm hiding any quote or proposal. So there were some that I called, and they did not call back, so...
With all due respect, I would, the traffic engineering is not going to...
Just put it to my estreffing if you want.
Yeah, I'll do that.
For example, just to give you an idea, when the subdivision, when the subdivision that was done for the industrial component on Ricketts Drive, they went through the process, they didn't even require a traffic report.
Let's cove, all right?
Okay. Should get it in a moment.
Yeah, thanks.
Cove, yes. Still, it's a board that, and, which kind of surprised me a little bit, but they didn't even require a report. So I would, so the traffic review, I don't think is gonna take a lot of time. So with all due respect, I would ask that you contact again, and I can also, if it's appropriate...
No.
Okay.
No. If anyone's gonna contact, you know, and let me also remind the board, when it comes to the peer review consultant, the applicant only has two grounds to object to whoever you decide to hire. And let me emphasize, this board decides who you want to hire as your peer reviewer. They can object based on qualifications, they can object based on a conflict of interest. They can dispute the cost all they want, but that is not a basis for them to challenge who you select. If you, you know, that's entirely within the board's purview, who you want to select. If you decide you want to contact some more firms and put this off to your next meeting and get some proposals, that is entirely up to you.
Well, I, you know, I feel it's our, you know, as it's already, you know, a little far along into the process, we do have two proposals that are legitimate, and it seems that the only real issue or dispute between us and the applicant might be price. And, you know, if we take a quick look at the Stein Hudson proposal here, they see, you know, it seems to be within the ballpark as Mr. Cusson suggested. And I would personally, and I would personally would think that perhaps it would be best, if we could move this along, if people, you know, if we looked at the proposal for a moment, and if it appears to be reasonable, then in terms of what we need, then I would suggest that we approve it and go with Stein Hudson.
What were you gonna say, Lucas?
No, I just want to move forward. So I would like to make a motion to hire Bowman Engineering as a traffic, for the traffic study.
Well, that's what we had already accepted, right?
No, we, no...
No, we haven't yet.
Yes, we deferred on that because of the issue of cost.
I mean, I wasn't looking into both of them. What about the other company? Did you have a, are you just, what is it about Bowman that?
Which one?
What was it about Bowman?
No, I just make a motion, so we can accept it. I can make another motion, hiring Howard Stein, so it's not a problem. I just want to move forward. I don't want to discuss, you know, endless conversation, getting proposal from this, this is too expensive, this is not, it's not, it's not what I wanted to do.
Yeah, I mean...
Careful what you volunteer for.
And I already spent time.
All right.
So it's up to you guys.
I mean, do we have the Bowman proposal on this, I mean, sorry, do we have the other, can we please have a proposal on the screen? The one from Stein Hudson?
I think I just close it.
Yeah, I received it.
I didn't get the other one.
I forwarded it to her just now, so, I'm sorry, I overlooked it. I haven't seen this document before today. Anyway, but...
What, I do, because you've read them both closely or went through both of them. You talked to both companies. Like, I'm trying to just understand...
I try to always go for a more reputable company.
It's more reputable.
Yes. That has a lot of engineers and stuff.
Yeah.
But, you know, I am not insensitive to the concerns of the applicant, namely, that the price differential between their actual study and someone peer reviewing or taking a second look at their study, their numbers are a bit far apart. I don't want to, I don't think that's the subject of this, you know, we should do...
Yes, but do we know if the price the applicant is paying is the market price or is the real price? I don't know. Maybe applicant is doing a lot of business with this company, and they get, I have no idea.
Yeah, I know.
That's not, that's not right. That's not appropriate.
We don't, we have not done any, they are, I do a lot of developments, a lot of 40B developments. Of all the developments that I've been involved in over the last many years, I have never worked with Stein Hudson, except they are doing a traffic study for one of my clients in Medway. And we have done work with some of these others in the same fashion. So I just, just from my experience, which is substantial, it just does not make any sense. I mean, it might make sense to view the scope...
Both of them, they don't make any sense, or only one?
Well, no, $8,800 is...
Still high.
Typically, we pay $4,000, $5,000, $6,000 for peer review of a traffic report. And this is a small development. I mean, it's from...
Your perspective.
From a traffic point of view.
So you're trying to say that they are both overpriced, right?
No. What I'm trying to say is that the proposal from Howard Stein is not by any stretch of imagination a lowball amount. Based on my experience, we've been paying $4,000, $5,000, $6,000 for typical traffic reviews. $8,800 from a firm like Howard Stein, they are a larger firm, and their overhead is gonna be higher, and their salaries are higher, so they're a little bit higher. That, to me, makes some common sense, but to be more than, almost double, that's what I'm having a problem with. I don't have a problem with the firm, but it's just that, and my, I mean, the developer, I mean, he can speak for himself, but, and we've worked together on developments, and we've never paid that much money.
There's motion on the table.
All right. Well, anyway, before we ask the motion, I would say that, you know, that the scope of services from the Stein proposal, as I see them, seem to be reasonably detailed and ask, you know, questions that, you know, seem to be the ones that you would ask as a peer reviewer of a study. And I would, you know, I would suggest that it might be the more prudent approach to go with the Stein proposal, as it does appear to be more proportional to the existing expenditure than the Bowman would be.
Okay, I agree. I'm gonna withdraw my motion. I'm gonna make a new motion to hire, what's the name of the company again?
Howard Stein Hudson.
Howard Stein Hudson as our peer review for our traffic study.
Second.
Yeah, and I would fall in favor. I would say yes. So I know Carolyn had mentioned she's seen their work, and it's very professional, very well done, so I feel good about that.
So what's going to be, I just want to make sure, the situation with the traffic study. Are you going to send the documents or plans to our peer review, so the next time there will be a presentation, or there will be no presentation? What's the...
However you want to proceed. Typically, we submitted that to you, and I think you also have it in electronic form, so you can submit it directly to Howard Stein. I'm not sure what their procedure is gonna be about monies and all that sort of thing. Or we can do that, whatever. And I would suggest Jeff does a pretty good job, and from a layman's point of view of explaining traffic, to have him at the next meeting, although maybe the second meeting, because I think the next meeting is gonna probably take up a full night, maybe, just of engineering.
I would think so.
At the next meeting. So maybe the meeting after that, we bring Jeff in, and hopefully by that time, maybe Howard Stein would have had an opportunity to comment on the traffic report.
Okay.
But you tell me if you want me to send the information. I think it's better coming from you, because you are hiring them. I'm not hiring them.
No, I agree. Now...
And all right, you know, my office can send to you if you need something electronically or anything like that. We can do that as well.
Have we seen the traffic study?
I don't think it's ready, right? It's not ready yet, right? Traffic study?
I don't think it was the initial application.
No, it wasn't.
No, it wasn't.
It wasn't.
So when is gonna be ready? I think you wrote that in...
So what I need to do is find out what the status of that is and get that to you, so that you can then engage Howard Stein.
Okay.
I think he must be pretty close to the finish.
All right. And of course, we'll also need a check, too. Sorry about that.
Well, that comes out the same peer review account?
Well, that, well...
Usually.
Yes, I mean, but, you know, if we're giving $15,000 to Driscoll here, then we need another 8,800 to give to Stein, so we need that, too, I guess.
Right. I mean, you're not paying it all out at one time, but yes, you are gonna need another check.
You're paying Greg as the invoices, right? So as that account gets down to, you know, I think we agreed $2,500.
Then you get another check.
We replenish it. So as it gets down, I mean, because you're not gonna give Greg the whole amount right away.
Okay. So I was a little confused, I thought that, you know, maybe I thought that's what I was doing, but is that from the one who's gonna have to be putting in that form? But anyway, but how much do I actually, you know, how much is the direct deposit do you need, you know?
We initially asked for $7,500, but we had traffic in that as well.
Okay.
Oh, so traffic is in, oh, that's if we use the other company, you mean?
Yes. Well, that's, it was all included enough in that, so we asked for $7,500 upfront.
So how about, so how about $5,000?
Give you back, yeah.
Okay. All right. Well, we got something, we got something else accomplished. Let's see, is there anything else that we've, that anyone here can feel that we can get accomplished tonight, or should we adjourn the meeting now?
I asked you a question.
Sure.
I'm fairly new to town. I've only been here about four years.
Could you identify yourself?
About four years.
Know your name.
Oh, my name's Eric Donovan. I live in 66 Winter Toyota. You know, we moved, after 50 something years, we moved from Dorchester. I counted, aside from the applicants, including the applicants, excuse me, there was 12 people here. This seems to me like a pretty big project. Why do you have meetings in the summer? Because where I come from, there aren't, right? Because people go on vacation. You just, the next meeting's gonna be on the Tuesday before Labor Day. I got a cousin that lives almost directly across from this. I know he's very interested. He's away on vacation.
What if we do it the next week?
Well, I mean, the reason why we, you know...
But if this goes through, right, isn't this gonna increase the population of town by like 10%?
Taxes, too.
Right. Don't you think there'd be more interest, like if this was in September?
Well, I mean, we are guided by when the applicant files this application, and the law requires that we issue a decision within six months of that filing.
Oh, I'm gonna turn you. I got it. You know what I mean? But I'm saying...
But also, we don't want to, you know, you know, if we're getting close to six month mark, we don't be, you know, we have to schedule meetings every week just to, you know, go through all the facets of this project, so we have...
And 6:30, people work.
Yes. And one thing we've tried to do is, we've tried to record the meetings and have them broadcast, so people can, if they wish to, you know, to review themselves of what's been happening on each meeting, and so if they wish to come and express their concerns, they may, they may at a subsequent meeting. But also, we are trying our best to get, you know, through this process as, you know, as quickly as we can, so we're trying to do, you know, even though it's the summer and it's, you know, 90 degrees outside, we are still trying our best to do some things that we can during that time.
This is also new to us, so we're figuring it out.
I appreciate that. Can I ask, how many units do you really want, right? Because you tell you 30 duplexes, 60 units, like, what do you really want? Because like I said, I'm from Boston. This happens all the time, right? You ask for 200, you really want 40?
All the information is publicly available on...
It's on the website.
On the website.
No, I bet that. What I'm saying is, that's what they put out there, how much you really want.
We're getting to that. We might take several more meetings, but, thanks for coming, though.
I mean, there will be an opportunity for people to stand up and express their concerns.
I mean, I moved here for a reason. After a whole lifetime, you know? This is a sleepy little town. It's gonna change, and 25% low income? Oh, it's not low income.
It's affordable, however, right?
But it's not 55 plus, correct?
No.